I'm gonna go ahead and open the six o'clock special meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bruins, President, Councilmember Daniels. Councilmember Miller. Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
And Mayor Middleton.
Here. Next item, please.
We have public comment and members of the public may address the council. If you are on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function or star nine. And I have no speaker identification card submitted.
Okay, seeing no public comment. Next item, please.
And next item, we have study session, item number two. The subject is discussion concerning future development on Sayonara Drive.
Good evening, council. Allison Bermudas with the Community Development Department here tonight for this study session. It's nice to see you and be in person with you. Tonight, we're gonna be talking about a project for Sayonara Drive. And we're gonna be looking for input and direction. It's just a discussion on the future development of Sunrise, um, excuse me, Sayonara, on our vacant parcels that we own on that, on that street. So we're gonna go through a little bit of history on Sayonara. We have a replacement housing obligation that we're trying to meet. I'd like to introduce our potential partners here, Habitat for Humanity, that will be presenting. We're gonna review some housing mix options that are possible for Sayonara. Talk about funding for those projects. Tie it into our general plan and how it relate to our policies and our housing element. Talk about the timeline and then get into the meat of the program which we'll be discussing. So the properties we're talking about on Sayonara Drive are shown here in yellow. The city purchased these properties 12 years ago or so and have demolished housing units. They were vacant. Three of the properties have since been redeveloped. We're all familiar with the park that's on Sayonara Drive in Ming. One of the parcels was turned into the park for the children. And then the two parcels across the street at the corner are the side of the Sayonara Community Center, leaving 12 parcels vacant on Sayonara. We know Sayonara's history. It had a historically high number of service calls even since before we were a city. Continued that after cityhood, the city really took Sayonara under its wing and worked out several things and tried to reduce the blight and the calls for service on Sayonara. And at that time, we had a redevelopment agency. And with their funding, they were able to purchase the 15 properties in Sayonara that were determined to be blighted. We eventually removed 64 housing units on Sayonara. And we were obligated through the redevelopment law to replace those housing units to the income levels that were there when they were demolished. So we had five years from the time of demolition. So this goes back to 2010. Obviously, we didn't meet that five-year obligation. There was a lot of challenges with the, with getting the project off and running. So we were able to get an extension. And so that extension is what we're in right now, but it does end September of 2022. So that's what gets us here tonight.
Allison, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
When you say it ends September 2022, is that when we have to start doing something by?
We have to be fairly invested into the project by September.
Fairly invested.
So we're gonna say, we're gonna say entitlements is our goal, is to have entitlements.
As long as we're fair about it.
So over that time, in 2009, we, in Sayonara, we did the Sayonara Drive Improvement Project. So a lot of that has been accomplished. Prove the look of the street, streetlights, a lot of different strategies that reduce crime and blight. So that was in 2009. And as part of that redevelopment for the street, we adopted the replacement plan for those housing units that we removed. And so that was adopted in 2010. It did outline the number of units that would be replaced on the street. Gave some conceptual thoughts about how many bedrooms they would have. All that was in 2010. And, but to note on that replacement plan, it was, even though it was adopted, it is, would be amended. And assuming it would be amended depending on how we move forward tonight. And to remind you of our replacement obligation. As I said, we demolished the units on Sayonara Drive. So under the redevelopment law, we were, we are required to replace them. We had an obligation to replace 35 units. And if you recall, we did demolish 64. But many of those units were vacant at the time of demolition, so we were not obligated to replace them. So we had 35 units replaced. Some of those had tenants in them or hadn't been vacant long enough. So they have to be replaced. So it brought us a 35 requirement. We did get credit, replacement credit for the Sunrise Point Project. If you recall, that's the multifamily affordable supportive, supportive housing project on Sunrise. That's 100% affordable to very low incomes. And so that does give us, reduces our obligation. And so we have a remaining obligation of 12 units or 24 bedrooms. As I mentioned, we didn't get anything done in that first five-year period. We had challenges. Finding a partner, a development partner at that time was difficult. A few reasons, you know, it's a relatively small project. These are individual parcels. They have to be all affordable units. Typically, in an affordable project, you're gonna see a lot of units in it. And these were pretty small and takes a lot of different funding put together to make those type of projects get, get developed. So it was very challenging to find a partner. And then also, these are gonna be ownership units. So that was the other challenge, is finding someone who wanted to develop affordable units that were for ownership. Which really brings us tonight to our potential partner here with Habitat for Humanity. We were able to connect with them, had, we've had discussions with them over the past few months. And this is really a great project, fits their goals, what they do. And it's the right size. So they'll, they're here tonight and I'll introduce you to them in just a moment. But Habitat really, I think we're all familiar with who they are. They're a nonprofit housing builder. They really deal, bring ownership homes and pride to communities that are trying to rebuild and re, give a new face. And so Habitat really fits that bill. They have a variety of housing options that we'll talk about, that will meet, that will meet or exceed our housing placement obligation and help fulfill our goals. So I'd like to introduce Habitat for Humanity and Leah Miller.
Good evening, mayor and city council members and staff. My name's Leah Miller. I'm the president and CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Greater Sacramento. And I'm joined here by two of my colleagues. Anne Gambino, she is our Forward Planning and Special Projects Manager. And also Michael Gordon, who is our Director of Construction. And we're thrilled to be able to be here today and chat with you a little bit about this, the opportunity for partnership on this project. You know, I think we're all probably familiar with Habitat to some level. I've heard of Habitat for Humanity, but wanted to take an opportunity to just share with you a little bit about what we're doing here in our community and go a little bit deeper into what Habitat for Humanity does. You know, you're familiar that Habitat for Humanity is a very large national, international organization. But our affiliate here in Sacramento has been serving the Sacramento and Yolo Counties for the last 36 years. And we're a community-based organization. That, what that means is we have a local Board of Directors and we do all of our fundraising here locally. And, you know, it takes a community to build a community. And so we engage a wide variety of partners in our community to raise the funding that we need to build homes and to build the homes that we build. And the families that we serve come from our local community. As I said, we're a community-based nonprofit dedicated to building and repairing homes, community, and hope. You're familiar that we build homes, right? You know, there's a lot of myths out there. A lot of people think that we give the homes away. And through the slides that we'll go through, I hope to, to share with you a little bit more about what we do and that we don't give those homes away. The people that we serve actually purchase those homes after putting in $500 hours of sweat equity. And they purchase them with a zero-interest equivalent 30-year mortgage. So we build homes, we rehab homes, but we ultimately provide new homeownership opportunities to hardworking families that are low-income, that probably ordinarily wouldn't have the opportunity to have an equity-building opportunity such as through homeownership, especially in our current market with the rising cost of, of homes in our community. So we provide those equity-building opportunities to people who have, in many ways, due to, you know, systemic issues, been kept out of the opportunity to own a home. We also have our Neighborhood Revitalization Program. And through that program, we both repair homes to ensure we're able to preserve the affordable housing stock in our community so that we don't lose units. We mostly serve seniors and veterans through that, that program specifically. And then we also do community projects where we help to uplift neighborhoods, revitalize communities, and do projects, parks, a variety of different things, playgrounds, community gardens, to provide more amenities for the community and bring community together. And then there's our Restore. If you haven't been there, it's like a Home Depot meets Goodwill. You can find all sorts of building materials there. Everything in there is either donated or gently used. And it's all stuff for the house. And the revenue from that helps to cover our, our operating costs. And it also provides an opportunity to, for a lower cost, do home improvement projects around your home. It's one of the perks of working at Habitat. And for the last 36 years, we've built and repaired over 300 homes. And we annually serve over 8,000 people through our build, repair, and community projects. And the work that we do, we engage a whole host of volunteers in our community. As I shared when I started, it takes a community to build a community and the community people make the work that we do possible. And annually engage over 2,000 volunteers who put in 25,000 hours. The next couple of slides are going to share with you a little bit about current projects that we have going on. If you've heard about Habitat for Humanity here in our community over the, the years, the decades, you've probably heard largely about the work that we do in infill lots, one home at a time. But we're doing things a little bit differently going forward. Currently, we have a development. It's 13 homes that we're currently working on in the south area on Mandel and Estates. We have five homes completed, eight homes currently under construction. And it will be complete in the fall. And I was just out there today. We have something going on called Women Build, where we engage 500 women throughout the month of March on all of our build sites to come out and help to build and repair homes. Next slide, please. Coming up, our next project will be breaking ground this next Tuesday. And would love to invite you each to come out. We'll send a follow-up email to invite you to, to come to the groundbreaking if you're interested, but also for a tour of our Mandel and Estates project, if you're interested in that as well, to see a project in progress. And this project that's coming up on Cornerstone is a first-of-its-kind development in our community that is a partnership between Habitat for Humanity and Mutual Housing of California. And together, this community will become home to 400, over 400 people. Habitat will be building 18 single-family homes and Mutual will be building 108 rental, all of it affordable. So our part will be ownership, their part will be rental. But it's an opportunity to show the affordable housing spectrum as a whole and the opportunity to continue to move people through the affordable housing spectrum onto the opportunities such as homeownership and equity building. That'll be starting, like I said, groundbreaking next week. We'll be starting infrastructure and we look to start our, our construction side of the Habitat side in June. Next slide, please. A lot of people wonder how we qualify families. As I shared, a lot of people think we give the homes away and that's, it couldn't be further from the truth. We qualify families to, for the opportunity with, to become homeowner partners with Habitat for Humanity. They have to demonstrate a current need. They have to currently be living in substandard or overcrowded conditions, which means more than two people to a bedroom or people living in a place in the house that isn't a bedroom, like a living room, paying more than 50% of their rent, their income in rent, which is not uncommon in this current market as rents continue to increase in our region. And they also have to have a willingness to partner. Each of our homeowners puts in 500 hours of sweat equity, building their home and other Habitat homes. And they have to be willing to share their story and participate in, in financial education courses. If you can move to the next slide, please. But they also have to have that ability to pay. That's a really important part, right, in owning your own home. The homeowners that we qualify are hardworking families earning between 30 and 80% of area median income with stable income coming in. They have to demonstrate that through that stability, they have the ability to hold on to a mortgage and pay a mortgage, which is structured to be no more than 30% of their income. And their monthly payment includes their principal, their property taxes and insurance. And they have to be able to maintain those pieces. And here's just a quick little example of what a family of four earning between 30 and 80% of area median income earns. And that's 27,000 to 72,000. Next slide, please. What we do is made possible because of a community that comes together. Funding that we get comes from corporations and grants and foundations, individuals, faith communities, and our revolving fund for humanity. And what that is, is that when, when homeowners make mortgage payments, it goes right back into, to building more homes. And it takes the volunteers to do what we do, as I shared before. Next slide, please. All of our homes are built all-electric and energy-efficient so that they're affordable, not just from a mortgage perspective and that structure in the mortgage should be no more than 30%, but also that it's affordable from a utility perspective. And so yes, there's the EV piece to it, but also drought-tolerant landscaping as well. Next slide, please. And the way that homes are sold, while the homes are structured to be affordable, that's through the mortgage that we're able to do that. The homes themselves are sold at, at appraised value. So it helps to lift the neighborhood around it with those new home, new home values. And as I shared, the, the mortgage is structured so that it's zero-interest equivalent and structured to be affordable and secured by a deed of trust. In most cases, Habitat is the, not just the builder and developer, but also the, the loan originator in, in that case as well. Next slide, please. And it's more than just a home. Having a stable place to live provides so many benefits outside of just a place to call home, a place where your address is. Provides financial stability and empowerment, physical health and, and mental health, equity-building, positive and educational outcomes, and also workforce development opportunities for the community. You know, and so a lot of people ask, well, what if a homeowner wants to sell a house? Well, I'll tell you, it doesn't happen that often. You'll see on the slide that we've only had about six homes that have been sold over the past 20 years when we looked back at our records. Reason being, because the mortgage is affordable. You can't really find another place to get a home at that cost. But in, in the event that someone does want to sell, which happens in the situation where, let's see, an example might be someone got a job out of, out of state and they have to move. Or oftentimes, our homeowners, through having a, a stable, safe, simple, decent place to live, are able to go on to further their educational opportunities. And so sometimes, we've seen a case where a homeowner went on to go back to college, get their degree. And the wife was able to get her, her culinary certificate through Cordon Blue. And then he went on to go get his masters. And they were able to increase their income opportunities, which is the goal ultimately, right? So they, they were able to come to Habitat, who has the first right of refusal. So if you wanted to sell your home, you have to come to Habitat and say, gosh, we've been, you know, our, our education's increased, our job opportunities have increased, our savings have increased. We'd like to, we've also outgrown our home. We've had another kid. And we'd like to look at maybe buying, buying a, a larger home to accommodate our family. What are our options? So Habitat has the first right of refusal to purchase that home back. And that has been the case in some situations. Or we might allow them to, to sell it. But in, in most cases, we do end up purchasing that back. I'll also mention that there are windfall provisions built in there so that if they should choose to sell and we don't take the first right of refusal, that there's an equity-sharing piece in there so that there's not a windfall should the values of, of real estate increase. And, you know, that, like I said, when, when a home should sell, if, if they should sell it on the market or they should pay off their mortgage, those proceeds go right back into building more Habitat homes. And oftentimes, when partnering with jurisdictions and receiving government funding, there's deed restrictions. And that, that's the case with all of the homes that we build now. There's a deed restriction there for affordability based upon AMI. Next question. That's it. There's so much, and on and on about Habitat. But I think one of the best ways to kind of see, touch, and feel what we do is to come out and see one of our job sites. So like I said, I'll send you an email with an invite. Maybe it would be fun to put together a time to come out and see our development on Mandel and Estates and see what it looks like, Habitat home looks like. And I'll also send you an invite for that dedication, the groundbreaking coming up next Tuesday. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Leah. So as she showed, they have done some projects. And just to give you a recap what they could look like on Sayonara, are the top slide being a potential, a single-family home, two-story option, single-story option. And then the bottom being a representation of what a duplex unit may look like. So I want to talk about the options that we have for Sayonara Drive. And these, in looking at the street layout and what's there, and then meeting our obligation, these are some different housing mix options to consider. We have four different ones. These are not, it's up to you if there's something different that you like, want us to look at. This is just totally, just to get the discussion going. But the first option could be an all-duplex option. So we have 12 lots and each lot would have a duplex. Each side would be owned by an owner. So it'd be 24 homeowners, approximately 84 bedrooms. Projected cost about 246,000 per unit, just under 6 million total cost for that project. That's how that would lay out on the street. So as I mentioned, there are 12 properties that are remaining vacant on Sayonara. As you can see here, there's one in pink noted as a community garden, which then would drop the housing or the lots down to 11. And how we get to 12 is that one lot there on the corner on the north side, the 7795. If you recall, that one had an eightplex on it that was demolished. It was a lot larger of a lot. So that one would be split into two lots. So it's more comparable to the lots of the other size. The other lots are about 7,000 square feet. So that's how we get back to the 12. That community garden, as you notice, is kind of a separate parcel. It's kind of disjointed from the rest. And just in discussions, thinking how the street would look with new houses and then kind of have one in the middle, we thought that might be a great place for a community garden, bring some more activity to the street, bring some opportunities for garden growing to maybe the children of the Sayonara Center and the homeowners on the street. So that's just an option that we thought about to consider. And then all the new homes then there would be on the adjoining parcels on the north and south of Sayonara. So this is the layout, should it be 12 duplexes. The other option, complete opposite, each lot with a single-family unit. So that would provide 12 units, about 45 bedrooms, a little bit higher cost, 251,000, just over 3 million in total cost. That would lay out like this. So each lot, single-family home on the lot, again with the community garden. Another option would be to put the duplexes on the north side of the street. So you have eight duplexes on the north side and the four single-family units on the south side. So that would bring it up to a total of 20 units, about 70 bedrooms, cost about 247 and just under 5 million total. So that's how that would look, the north side. Those are duplex units. And then the south side being single-family. And then, bet you can't guess what's next. We'll put eight single-family on the north side and four duplexes on the south side. So about 16 units total, 56 bedrooms. That would provide about 248,000 cost and just under 4 million for this project. That's how this would lay out. So a total, kind of putting that all together in one shot here gives you the total units of each project options. And then some funding that we'll talk about briefly. So the 24 units, that would be 12 duplex units. That's a top one. Then the next one is the 12 single-family. The 20-unit option is the eight duplexes, four single-family. And then 16 units is four duplexes and eight single-family. So look at the city's potential contribution. This is funds that have been identified that we have targeted for affordable housing. And so our potential contribution would be 1 point, could be 1.4. As you're well aware, these type of projects don't happen with a single person, like Habitat. It takes a group effort, a lot of different funding layers. And our contribution would obviously be part of that. And since we do have an obligation to replace those lost housing units on Sayonara. So the 1.4 million approximately is what we've identified could be available from the city's housing funds. We could provide fee waivers of about $14,000 per unit. These would be waiving the building permit fees for construction. Habitat's estimated potential assistance is about 150,000. They usually get about $75,000 in sponsorship per home. And then they apply for Cal Home Mortgage Assistance for the other 75. So that's about 150. So if you look at the total, at the end, there, there is a gap on two of the styles or two of the layouts. So the 24-unit, which is the all-duplexes, identified gap, potential gap of about $25,000 per unit. The total gap for the project would be about 600,000. And then we have two layouts that no identified gap with the funding. Should it all come available, what's shown here on the screen, there's two layouts that would have no gap. And then the 20-unit model, just under 200, about 289,000 and identified gap. And you're wondering like, where's the city's 1.4 million coming from? So these are some of the, the funds that we've identified could contribute to make up that, just under 1.4 million. We have PLHA funds. We have a three-year allocation, about 735,000. We do have our Affordable Housing Funds. Those are the funds that are collected at building permit stage from commercial development. We have some 1998 home funds still available and then the permit fee waivers. But it's important to notice, to note that some of those, you know, identify, some of those mixed options did have a gap. And I don't want you to say, oh, no, we can't do those because there's a gap, because there still is opportunity to fill that. The city has some opportunities through different grant programs. There's some coming out, a Green Means Go grant coming. There's ARPA funding, so there's a variety of funding sources that we can continue to work on should an option be chosen and there's a gap. As well as Habitat has options also to increase their contribution. They could get additional sponsorships, things like that. So I don't want you to eliminate one of the options just because there was an identified gap. Obviously, we're not making any funding decisions tonight. This is just to kind of give you the thought process of where we've got to at this point. That all would be discussed later at a regular council meeting with your input and your review, consideration, and approval on any funding decisions. And as Leah mentioned in her presentation, these are all income-restricted units. The, we have obligation to replace the units to, for income-level restrictions. And how this is kind of different because we have our redevelopment law income restrictions that we have to meet for the site because we removed units under redevelopment. So we have obligations on that that had certain income limits. As well as, this is considered surplus land. And so that we have an obligation for income restrictions under the Surplus Lands Act. And then we have Habitat, they have their targeted incomes as well. So taking all those different things together, this is kind of what I project the income levels would have to be for each of those mixed options. So if you went with the 12-unit option, three of them would have to be sold to what is considered very-low incomes. And that's the 30 to 50% area median income level. Nine of them would then be at the low income. And so on down, so 16 units, you'd have four very low and 12 low. A 20-unit option, you'd have four very low and 16 would be low. And the 24-unit, we'd have, we'd serve five people at the very-low income levels and 19 then would be low. And Leah gave you the numbers in her presentation, but just to give you an idea, the area median income for Sacramento County is $91,100 for a family of four. So a very-low income, you're about 27,000 to 45,000 income. And a low income is about 45,000 to 68,000. So just to give you an idea, an average teacher in Sacramento County, I looked this up, was $65,883. So they're in the low-income category. And a county technician is about 44,000. So just to give you an idea of some job services out there that would qualify under these income, these income levels. Got to talk about the general plan real quick. As you know, there's a lot of policies in there about housing and homeownership. They're on the screen here. But policy 27.1 specifically addressed Sayonara Drive. And it really was to continue the redevelopment strategies of Sayonara Drive, improve our, improve our housing opportunities in the city, offer a variety of housing types for a variety of people, all different needs. So the timeline for the project, as we are kind of, we are targeting that September 22nd for, in project entitlements. We do have to declare this a surplus property before we do any land transfer. And so that potentially will be at your next council meeting. On the 24th, we will declare the property exempt surplus. We have to send that to HCD for their review and approval of that action. We will have to come back and amend that replacement plan that I talked about, assuming it will need refinements from any direction that we receive tonight. We'll have to work on our transfer and regulatory agreements with Habitat. And then obviously approve and review the funding plan for the project all by September. So for discussion, a couple of things as talking, when we talk about unit mix options, just want to, for you to consider, there's unit styles, there's unit options, and there's opportunities. But I want you to not consider one of the unit mixes because there's the gap. And then to think about the different opportunities that the different housing types would offer. types would offer. Single-family, I think that's probably what we all would traditionally think for that street, but maybe not every family would want one unit, you know, lots are larger, there's more upkeep, maybe a duplex would fit some family needs, provide more housing. So just different opportunities, it's a unique chance to improve Sayonara with the new housing. So it's just different things to consider as we discuss the options. And then I just wanted your input on the community garden, that was just something that came up during our discussions. It certainly does not have to be a community garden if that's something you don't foresee for the street, it could be another housing unit. So just some input on that would be great. And I did forget to mention the community garden, what I think the plan would be, would be operated, and they had to get direction, they partner with Soilborne. So if you've heard of them, they do a lot of those type of gardens. So it would be a partnership with Habitat and that, a group like that for that garden. That is all now. I'll answer, any questions you have? Jeanie, go ahead.
Did I, did I just hear you say the garden would be a partnership with Habitat?
It would be, Habitat would partner with Soilborne. They have a lot of community gardens in the area, and so they would partner with them for the operation.
Okay, so then the city would not own that garden?
Would not own it.
Okay, so we wouldn't.
We might partner with them through different programs, but it would not be ours.
Let's see, so how far, this is a question probably for Habitat, how far-reaching are your candidates, how far do you go geography-wise to get candidates to buy the houses?
Anyone in Sacramento and Yolo County. You have to live currently in Sacramento and Yolo County, but I know that one of the considerations that I'm sure the council would have is like, well, how do we get more citrus heights residents for these properties particularly? And so what we look to do is partner with other organizations in the community to help get the word out about what we're doing. As we're an equal housing opportunity lender, we can't discriminate based upon, you know, a whole host of things, but we cast a wide net, we look for opportunities to get the word out as much as possible, and we would look to partner, like the city council, other nonprofits here in town, to get the word out as much as possible within nonprofits, businesses, organizations that are here so that we can get the word out in the community, and hopefully be able to, to be able to have folks from the local community apply, and then be able to receive some applications.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, can I?
I don't think you should sit down.
Yeah.
All right.
So, and sorry, Jeanie, did I interrupt you, but on this point, just real quick, you waltz very nicely there, and I just want to ask this specific question, can we restrict the first opportunity to people who live in citrus heights now?
Because we're an equal housing opportunity lender, you can't restrict based upon geog or geographic location.
And the good news is when they move in, they'll be citrus heights residents, and we're cool.
Right. What we can do is this, so cast a wide net, get a lot of applications. We are a special lender, so you get a lot of applications. We qualify, we figure out who we've got that's qualified, and of the qualified applications, then we can go, who lives in citrus heights? Are there people in citrus heights, then we can look at those in that way.
Thank you.
So do you, do you determine how many bedrooms basically, or how big the house will be based on the families that, the candidates, or do you predetermine three to four bedrooms or whatever?
Predetermined.
Okay, all right. So if there are new questions, I have a couple of thoughts, but if other questions.
Steve, did you have anything?
Sure.
Oh.
You have a question?
Something that piques my interest was this square footage. I know we had some diagrams there, but typically the single-family house is square footage and the duplexes.
Oh, and the duplexes, that's a great question, do we know?
So the single-family homes generally, um, generally our three-bedroom homes are about 1,100 square feet, and our four-bedroom homes are about 1,200 square feet. And from a living space point of view, because the duplexes are all going to be two stories, they'd be pretty similar in square footage, maybe a little bit less.
You know, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, could you say that again?
So our three-bedroom homes are about 1,100 square feet, and our four-bedroom homes are about 1,200 square feet.
Oh.
The duplexes, three and four bedrooms, would be fairly similar in size.
Okay, and then one or two baths?
Two.
Two, okay, great.
So a follow-up on that, because you just said something about duplexes.
Let's give Tim an opportunity to say something.
Thank you. Well, certainly my question was, and Allison, you, I have a couple of questions, and I think they might be directed more towards Allison than, and the first one was, certainly, do we need the, I would, I like the idea of a community garden, but I would rather put people in housing versus have a garden. That would be certainly my preference. The other piece of this that I would like to kind of offer, and I realize it's a little bit of a curveball, and that is, is there any way we could put one of these dwellings as transitional housing for someone who wants to come off the street, maybe, I don't know what the funding sources and how we would manage that, but is that something that, that we could, you know, that's potentially some beds that we would certainly want to look at that?
I can answer a question about the transitional housing. That isn't our, our model, is transitional housing, we could build it, but we wouldn't be able to operate it, it'd need to be another nonprofit that would operate it.
Or we'd have to hold back a property.
Well, and you're talking about going from the streets to owner, homeownership, that's a big leap.
No, no, I'm just simply saying that it would potentially be four beds that we, again, if it was operated by another nonprofit, that we could use that to transition folks from homelessness to at least being housed. Not suggesting a homeless shelter in any way, shape, or form, I'm simply suggesting that we might take a look at this as an opportunity for maybe one of these units to be managed in a way that we could, somebody wants to get off the street, we have a bed.
And you may take the community garden, instead of the community garden, that's what that would be.
That's my, that was my thought.
Okay. The conversation around the community garden was just right, by, our thought process was trying to create a cohesive community, and it looked funny to have this one house out here, but that might be a viable option. Yeah, and we could definitely build it, but we wouldn't be the operator of it.
Okay, thank you.
Brett?
I wanted to actually go back to the properties, there's 12 lots, and we bought them at some point, purchased them at some point, and how much did we pay for the 12 lots?
Oh, I don't have that information.
So.
Well, Brett, I could probably answer that in part, because I was around then.
Yeah.
We, those, first of all, those were not Title VIII properties, they were market properties. And so when the downturn hit and we were the recipient of federal dollars, I think we paid roughly somewhere around $200,000 or less for each property.
Until they caught on to us.
Actually, it wasn't just us, I mean, there were other people that outbid us, a couple of them, because we tried to get a majority of the lots so that we could basically be more in control of what happened on that, and form an HOA, basically. We didn't make, quite make that. So, but I do recall it was $200,000 or less per property.
Thank you. And then as we go through the process, am I hearing correctly, because you throw in all kinds of numbers in different areas, money is going to come back to the city and the taxpayer, since taxpayer money is what was used to purchase the properties?
We would be contributing to the project.
I thought I, there was one.
There is a regulatory agreement, Leah probably could answer.
There's a regulatory agreement that ensures that the homes remain affordable for long-term, but the, the money that would come back to, back here locally would be through the form of property taxes that the homeowners would pay. So they would pay principal, property taxes, and insurance.
Okay, so what I just heard was, we're not going to be selling these properties to these new homeowners, we're going to be giving this property basically to you, and you guys are going to be going through a process of then creating homes and having people buy those homes, and then that money goes to you.
It goes back into building more homes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I was just curious, you know, we tend to get in the weeds here, duplex ownership, I mean, I understand the whole single-family home, and if they sell it, they get to share in the equity, and I hope that's a generous agreement, because that's why you own a home, in my mind. But duplexes, you own both sides, so how does someone sell half a duplex?
It would be through a tenant-and-common agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're doing something similar to that in Folsom, where we're building, it'd be a tenant-and-common agreement as well, but not duplex, it's a different model.
I thought you had to go to Town Homes to do that.
You know, I think that's how you call it, right, isn't it? Half-plexes?
Are they like half?
It's half, it's not duplex, it's the terminology, right?
It's so.
And I always do set up.
So you own your half, basically.
Yep, that's right, now I remember it, thank you.
A half-plex, you can own half.
Right.
Yeah.
You have one common wall.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Okay. I just, I want to throw out a couple of thoughts. Steve and I were around when this all came down. You were, right, Steve, at the council there? And so one of our chief goals was to de-densify this street, because these were all four units per lot. And so with that in mind, as I look at it now, I favor either all single-family homes or the majority of them being single-family homes with the four duplex options on the other side of the street. I think that most closely meets the intent that we established back when this project was, when these houses, or these houses, these units were demolished, to de-densify the street, because density was one of the issues that we dealt with, along with crime and poverty and all these other things. So those are my initial thoughts on the, on the design that I'd like to see.
Any other comments?
Go ahead.
Thanks. I tend to agree with you, Jeanie, but also just maximizing the opportunity for housing, low-income housing. I tend to right now favor all duplexes because of that, and that still cuts our density down. So that's where I'm leaning, but, you know, could live with some single-family homes there. I just like to maximize our opportunity for housing folks, and that's it. I do like the garden idea as a community feature, but Tim's suggestion is also has some merit, so I could consider that.
On the community garden, just to, these units are in very close proximity to our current community garden, which has room, has space to grow. So just keep, and it's, it's owned by, you know, a nonprofit, it's well-managed, and so that's kind of, I mean, that could be a community garden here too, we don't need to have one, the city, but they're not far from an existing community garden. And I kind of like Tim's idea.
So as I've mentioned before, I grew up on this street and lived there 40 years ago, and it's just the same neighborhood, it's the same street, it's the same problems, and I feel in my heart that it will never change as long as it remains in its current makeup. And we are already the most densely populated community in the Sacramento region, and we have done, I think, more than our fair share of multifamily housing, low-income housing and whatnot, those opportunities are here. What is escaping citrus heights more and more are the ability to own a home. And so I want to say I fully support the option of single-family homes to the greatest extent we're allowed to and able to, and then after that duplexes, but I certainly would lean towards all single-family homes there as an opportunity for people to, to enjoy homeownership that they probably would not ever, or at least not for now, achieve. So I think that's the way we should go.
And I just say, I think that your feedback is really wonderful, and as a developer of affordable homeownership opportunities for hard-working families, it's important to be responsive to the community that you're building in, and the unique concerns of the community, the unique opportunities, and so we, you know, we want to make sure we presented a variety of opportunities to consider, but either way, that, you know, the council decides to go, we are happy to be able to partner for the opportunity to build the housing that the, the community needs.
Okay, and I'll just offer a couple of comments, and I know that we only have required at this point because of credits to do 70-ish units, but I do think that we have to be responsible. Single-family doesn't fit, in my opinion, the utilization in terms of land use. When we're, we're not very land-rich in citrus heights, and we have opportunity to build enough affordable housing and provide homeownership at the same time, we really should be looking at as many duplexes as possible. I really don't see how single-family homes will fit on that street. I actually, on our city tour with the city manager, we drove through there, and I looked around at that area, and putting some single-family homes there, it just, it doesn't seem appropriate. I think it's going to create kind of disparity in that area. And I think that, you know, quadplex, you know, fourplex is way too much, and I didn't even know there was an eight-plex, I didn't even know it was a thing. But I think a duplex is nice, and the way they're two stories, I think it'll offer enough room for families to come and to grow in citrus heights. Of course, yes.
So, and I'd just like to support the mayor's comments there, I want to house as many people as possible, and I just want to say that I'm delighted that we have Habitat Humanity involved here. I think it's the right direction, it's a sensible approach, and I definitely favor having more units and calling them half-plexes, not duplexes, is really a much more sensible. We do need more affordable housing here in California, so thank you.
And just to finish that, round that out, I do agree with Vice Mayor Schaefer, and, you know, maybe having one unit of transitional housing, exploring that option, we can't really talk about, we want to help and do something about homelessness and not really have a place in citrus heights where someone who needs to be off the street has a place to go. I think that would be great, and I know we already have some partnerships with Sacramento Self-Up Housing and other places, so I think that's a good start.
And I'd just like to say something before we close, that, I talk so loud. I'm the director of construction, it would really be awesome if you could come and see what we build. It's, it's like a stigma, you know, that we build low-income housing and it's not, we build an incredible house, and it's, it would, for all of you to see what we do is, and what they look like, and if it was duplexes or half-plexes, if it was half-plexes, sorry, it looks like a home. I mean, and the site, I mean, everything goes through the city, but we build a very excellent product, and we're very, very proud of what we do. And so I just, I just want to put that out there to all of you. Great, thank you.
And just one more comment, I saw on social media earlier yesterday where, I am so sorry, someone came and stole this construction materials from a nonprofit and just, you know, loaded up trucks and rolled off with them, I can promise you that in citrus heights, Chief Turkot will not let that happen.
We're going to hold you to that.
Any other comments or questions from council? Do you have enough information? I think I have enough, yeah, thank you very much for your input, good feedback. We'll take this, continue to work with Habitat, expect to be back before you, end of the month, with the surplus paperwork that we need to send off to get that ball rolling while we work on the housing mix.
One more last question for Allison. How many fourplexes are remaining?
How many remain?
Yeah, on the street? That's just half the street.
I don't know, that's a good question.
I just want to know what it'd take to buy those up.
A big checkbook.
A lot of money.
A lot of money.
A lot of money.
But maybe, have you had an experience with adjacent property owners going, hey, I can?
No, not yet.
Okay. Well, maybe we can market it to our Bay Area owners.
I like the way you think.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation and for answering our questions. And we'll adjourn, I'll give you guys 10 minutes. I know.